Okay, my live stream is active and we are recording the meeting.
Good evening and welcome everyone to a study session of the mayor and board of trustees for the village of Woodridge. Today is Thursday, December 17th, 2020, and the time is 6:07 PM, and we call the meeting to order. And if our deputy clerk would please call the roll.
Trustee Hendricks.
Looks like he disappeared.
I'll keep calling roll. We'll see if trustee Hendricks rejoins us here.
Okay, thank you so much.
Trustee Blair.
Present.
Trustee Martinez.
Present.
Trustee Abbott.
Present.
Trustee Crusek.
Present.
Trustee Page.
Present.
Trustee Hendricks.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present.
Quorum is established.
The purpose of this evening's village board study session is to review neighborhood parking concerns on Carrollwood Lane at A3rd Street in that vicinity and area, and to discuss options involving new on-street parking regulations along this area. For members of the public who are with us this evening via Zoom and who have signed up to either speak under public comments regarding the parking concern, we will first have village staff make a presentation, and then we will ask for public comment. We thank you for your patience in waiting, and I would like to ask Chief Cunningham if he's ready for his presentation, please.
I am there. Thank you very much, and trustees, thank you for giving me an opportunity to talk tonight. It's a topic that I've had a lot of conversations on, and ever since I could remember, since the very first day I've been a police officer, it's been an issue in the various areas that I've worked. So we're going to talk about overnight parking, in particular, in the Carrollwood area today. And just to give a little background, our overnight parking ordinance prohibits parking from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. But you can park if you get permission, and permissions are granted for one night at a time. Vehicles may only be parked overnight on street for three nights within a 30-day period, and we monitor that with our parking program, our frontline parking program. If somebody violates the ordinance, they get a $30 fine. If they don't pay that fine within 15 days, it's raised an additional $20. And after another 15 days, it increases 20, and it continues to a maximum fine of $105. Non-payment goes to collection agency, and they charge an additional $35 on top of the fines that are incurred. Next page. So a little bit about what we do with our overnight parking program, and I call it a program because I think it's, that's the way we need to address it. We look at it in total. But the first, the primary thing we use for our frontline program, or overnight parking program, is the frontline parking permitting program. And we used to do this by call-in. Every night, you'd have to call in by midnight and give it to a dispatcher or plate and where you live, and then that information will be transferred to the officer on the street to match up with any cars that he's seeing. Now, we do this through the program. It's made a lot, made it a lot easier for all involved, our residents, all the way through to the officers. And that frontline parking program allows people to utilize on-street parking with the permission, and I think this year will hit over 5,000 people utilizing that program. So it's been a great addition to what we do at the police department, but it's also caused a lot of problems for people, too, because we are given permission to a lot of people, probably much more than we did before. And those people that live in the neighborhood probably have some concerns that they're seeing cars on the street, but in many times, those cars have the permission to be there. One of the other things we do is we evaluate, we evaluate the trends. And what I mean by that is, if, if I see an increase in overnight parking in a particular area, it's usually, there's usually a causal factor, and you have to look at it that way. And it's pretty obvious when we have a neighborhood adjacent to multifamily housing, and we see an increase in parking, there's usually something related to that neighborhood that we have to look at. In the case of Carrollwood, the, when we see increases, it usually has something to do with the High Crest neighborhood. And I've been working closely with the High Crest neighborhood for, since I've been here, and I have a really, really good working relationship with the management there. They try very, very hard. And when I see increases and complaints from Carrollwood residents, I usually know that there's something related to that happening in High Crest. And a lot of times, I've, I've caused those increases. You want to, you want to back it up, Phil? We jumped there, right? So, so oftentimes, when I see an increase in police activity in the High Crest area, I talk over the man, talk to management, we talk about what's happening there. And one of the main things we do to kind of keep, keep those crime trends under control is we make sure that the people that are staying there actually reside there, right? They're supposed to be there. And oftentimes, especially in the summertime, we see an increase of unauthorized visitors and residents, and they take a very strict stance on that situation, and they tow cars out of there. So rather than get your car towed in High Crest, they'll park over into the Carrollwood area, and that's where we see those problems. The other methods we use, we use a lot of proactive deterrence. We'll do resident notifications. I've done in-person notifications to residents at High Crest. We've done targeted patrols, or we'll send officers into the area, multiple officers, and we use decoy vehicles in the area of Carrollwood. If you're familiar with the Denver boot situation, we'll actually, we've done it multiple times, we'll actually put one of our cars out there and put a Denver boot on it, in an effort to deter people from, from parking there. We've done community roll calls, a recent one that we've done in Carrollwood, I'll talk a little bit more about. We've done resident surveys, and obviously, we've done enforcement. The next page. So this is a little bit about parking tickets, and I use the parameters of January 1st of 2019 to December 14. And I want to include 2019 because the whole 2020 year is a little bit off as far as numbers go, just because of COVID. So I wanted to get a bigger, bigger date range in there to evaluate. But in that time period, we've written a total of 1,708 parking tickets, and 783 of those were overnight parking tickets. Of those 783, 79 were from the Carrollwood area. And when I say Carrollwood, I'm including like Deerwood, all the way to the court, so anywhere in that area. So that's about 10% of the overnight parking tickets that we've written across the board in the village. Something to note that of those 79 in the Carrollwood area, 18 of those tickets are attributed to one violator. It's somebody that I've actually, I've actually followed, talked to, but for some reason, this person just doesn't really care about the tickets. He doesn't utilize the permissions, the frontline permissions. He's just a habitual violator as far as the parking problem goes. And then looking at that, he is, he is the most, most person with the most violations in that time period. But we have other ones. We have five people that have vet, or four people that have more than five tickets in that time period. We have one that has seven, one that has eight, and one that has 10. And that's something I'll touch a little bit more as we go forward with the presentation. Next page. So specifically for Carrollwood, I've, I've spent a lot of time talking to the neighbors. I understand their frustration. That's what this purpose of this study session is, to see what we can do moving forward to make it better for them. But we had recently had a community roll call. We invited 41 residents or 41 households. We made notification to invite it into the Zoom meeting. 11 residents attended. We had a good discussion. Some of the concerns that were brought up by residents is their, their concern about potential criminal activity, based on the fact of these violators parking in the neighborhood. They have safety concerns because of the narrowing of the streets, right? If there's multiple cars on the street, it's hard to drive down it. Late-night noise complaints and littering, people will park there and they'll, they'll dump their garbage. And they have an overall frustration that the complex is pushing their problems into the neighborhood and the traditional enforcement efforts that the police department is making futile up until this point. Next page. Well, after that, that Zoom meeting, the community roll call, I felt that we needed to reach out to more residents. So we sent letters again, this time to 42 residents, and discussed some of the issues we're having, and maybe some possible solutions, or some things that they think would work. We put these four strategies together and sent it out and had a survey where residents can vote on what they felt was best for their, for their neighborhood. One of the one, with the option one was no street parking at any time, and that would be obviously real restrictive for the residents, and it may not even help us with our compliance efforts. So nobody really voted for that. The second option was no street parking, 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. All violators will be towed, and three residents were supportive of that, that effort. This would require our officers to generate case reports. They'd have to stand by for the tow to arrive. Probably 30 to 40 minutes, the officer would be tied down on that particular tow. Option three was parking permit, parking by permit only. There was 10 residents that felt strongly that that, that should be the option. So everybody in that neighborhood would have to have a parking permit or sticker, and any visitors would have to have a pass. Administratively, that would be pretty taxing for us. We can definitely do it. But it would impact a lot of the residents. I could see us actually towing cars that maybe don't have stickers or guests that were over, didn't have guest passes. I could definitely see us actually towing people that probably have the right to be there and would have, but they forgot to put their pass out. So those are some of the things we have to consider. And then lastly, the fourth option was continue our current enforcement strategy, and seven residents in the neighborhood felt that that was the best way to do it. The problem would be that we wouldn't be able to deter all the violators. We'd still be dealing with the frustration level of some of the residents there. So it wouldn't solve our problem completely. Next page. This should kind of reiterate the options that were put forward and what, what people voted for on the left-hand side here. And then the, the map is actually what people voted for. So it's kind of interspersed. It was a limited response. I was hoping for a little bit more response from the neighborhood. So you really can't tell one way or another what the whole neighborhood intends on wanting. But regardless, we got, we got to kind of figure out what we're going to go forward with it. Next page. So additional considerations, and I think a lot of times, it's easy to say, hey, if they're parking and they're violating law, that they just get towed. But I want, I want us to be aware of what it means to get your car towed. And I think this is important. We've talked about it before in one of our budget, budget meetings, maybe two years ago, we talked about our administrative tow fee. Our administrative tow fee is $250. It's one of the lowest around of any community. And at that time, we were considering raising it, because other, other municipalities were raising it. And I voiced an objection to that, because throughout my career, I've always been reluctant to tow people's cars, because when you tow somebody's car, you take a lot of the privileges away. So I always look for opportunities not to do that. But I want everyone to be aware of what it means to have your cart or your car towed. You'd have to come into the police station, pay a $250 administrative fee. You'd actually have to pay for the tow itself. So if it's a standard tow, the truck driver didn't have to maneuver, you know, multiple times to get it. It would probably be $150 fee. And then the storage fees on top of that is $35 a day. And 45 days after that, you're, you can have an administrative hearing to make sure that you can challenge the fact that your car was towed, and was it towed lawfully? If it wasn't, then you'd get reimbursed those fees. But in a case for overnight parking, most likely, it would be towed lawfully if that was against the ordinance. There's some other considerations you have to take into account. Your lost work, right? If your car is towed, you're going out there looking for your car, you can't get the work that day, and you lose that transportation for at least that day, and maybe multiple days. And when you lose your transportation, it could be a fact that you can't get your kids to school, or you can't make it to a doctor's appointment. And usually, when people are going through that stress, if their car is towed, they'll come to us, and we hear it on that end, too. So it's not an easy thing to tow somebody's car. It has consequences, and I think we have to consider that, too. So, next page. Some additional considerations that, that may help the situation, but not solve it. Some additional signage in the neighborhood. I know some of the concerns for some of the neighborhood, neighbors there is that cars are parking too close to that corner, so we can restrict parking a little bit farther out, and keep them from parking near that intersection. One thing I'd like to do is, and we haven't done it, in our frontline parking permission, if you have unpaid parking tickets, you shouldn't be allowed to, to use that system. Just makes sense to me that you're already abusing it, and now we're giving you permission to park again. So that's something that would take a little bit work on our end, but I think it's something that we should pursue. I think that any ordinance we consider tonight should be for a trial period. And one of the things we have to consider is that if we change or enact an ordinance for a specific neighborhood, there's going to be other neighborhoods with the same issues. So that's something we have to really figure out. If, if we did it for Carrollwood, is the neighborhood next to Waterbury neighborhood, are they going to want it, too? So we have to make sure we understand that. And another thing I'd like to talk about, and this goes back to that, that person has 18 parking tickets, is a chronic parking violator ordinance. And when I was in Naperville, we had issues, similar issues, and this is something we enacted there. And if, if you find a vehicle that's in violation, say it's, it's violation, the overnight parking ordinance, and it has, and Naperville was 10. If you had 10 or more tickets in a one-year period, whether they were paid or not, you're, you could be subject to your fine being doubled, your vehicle being towed, and your vehicle will be impounded until the overdue parking tickets have been paid. If we use that 10 kind of measure, there'd probably be two or three that we could actually implement this year. Some agencies do it for less. There's not many agencies that have chronic parking violator ordinances, but they do have the booting, the Denver boot or wheel mobilization, and they use the measure of five tickets, and then your car gets booted. That's something I've considered. Is that an option for us to boot or not? I'm reluctant to kind of go forward with that program. One thing is that you're booting a car, somebody comes back to that, to the neighborhood, their, their car is booted. Many of those people will try to take the boot off, or they'll try to drive. And at the very least, they'll be very, very upset. So now you got an upset person in a neighborhood. I could just see that being problematic, but I'm open to it if people think that's the option we should move forward with. But I think it will cause a lot of problems for us on the end part of it. Next, next one. I think that's it. Oh, yeah, questions. So I'll open it up to questions or any other ideas that people have. Like I said, this is something, ever since I've been a police officer, and as I move through the ranks, it's always been an issue that we've had to deal with. It's tough, because you can't satisfy everybody on this issue, but I understand the frustration level of the neighborhood. But also, we have a situation where some of these people that are maybe violating it, I know some people that, when you go in on the weekend to the High Crest neighborhood, and it's filled, there's no parking spaces there. Sometimes it's people that actually live there and have the right to park there, but they can't find a spot, so they, they pull, pull over to Carrollwood. Other times, it's just people that don't even have the right to park in High Crest. They're visiting somebody for the weekend, and they're just looking to, to park close to that area and walk back to High Crest. So there's issues either way.
Well, thank you. We're going to go ahead now and check and open up our public comment section. So I'd like to ask if we've received any written public comments prior to the meeting, and ask that we please enter those into the public record.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Cunningham. Members of the board, good evening. We received two written comments prior to the meeting. One, and both have been forwarded to the board, so you should have copies of those, and we will enter those into the record. One, dated December 11th, from Barbara Schragel, resides at 8229 Carrollwood Lane. So she sent some comments on that. We'll enter that into the record. We just received one from night, tonight, from Jim and Donna Zankus, Z-N-K-U-S, 8212 Deerwood Court, with their comments on this matter, and we've entered those into the record as well, and it has been forwarded to the board.
Thank you very much. I'd also ask if we have any members of the public attending via Zoom, and if they've indicated they'd like to provide any public comment on this matter.
Mayor Cunningham, we do have one person in the waiting room. They are in via phone, so I can invite them in and see if they would like to provide comment at this time.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, at this time, I'd like to remind the public that public comment is limited to three minutes. When anyone making a comment, I will give you a warning when you have 30 seconds, and also let you know when it is time. And then after your three minutes, Mr. Green will then mute the speaker if they want to go on.
Absolutely. And so the person joining us this evening is joining us with a phone number ending 4224. If that is you, can you please press the star and then the six key on your phone, and that will allow us to hear you.
Hello, good evening.
Hello.
Yes, hello, welcome.
Ma'am, if I could ask, ma'am, if I could ask you to start by identifying yourself by name and address, and then you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Maureen Davis. I live at 8220 Carrollwood Lane for the past 42 years. And I've not seen the parking situation as bad as it has gotten within the last two years, and all of these years. And we are retired couple, and it creates some inconveniences for us. In a sense, sometimes we don't feel safe in our neighborhood anymore. There's activity all night long. They park, they make noise, they throw their trash out. There's just so too much activity going on for the middle of the night. And so, you know, we are taxpayers and have been for all these years, and we've made a contribution to this village of Woodridge. And I don't think that we should be treated the way that we're being treated with all of this commotion going on in front of our house every night.
Mrs. Davis, this is Mayor Cunningham. Good evening. Thank you very much for calling in and sharing your perspective with us and your concerns. We do appreciate hearing from you very much, and we thank you for being a longstanding neighbor in Woodridge for 42 years. We thank you so much for calling in.
Thank you. And I know I do live next to Kathy Malnick, and I, I know you know who she is. And so we both share the disappointment that we see as long, longstanding residents of the village of Woodridge. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, madam mayor, there is nobody else in the waiting room this evening.
Okay, so thank you very much, everyone. We'll now close the public comments section and move to board discussion and deliberation on this matter. So I do open it up to my fellow board members, please.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please, trustee.
I have a couple of questions. Chief, does the complex have assigned parking for their residents? It seems to me that would be helpful.
They do. They've actually expanded their, their parking in the last year and a half, and they have assigned parking, and they also allow visitor parking. I think it's five, up to five visitor parking is a month. But you have to get it daily, just like we have to get it. And the problem comes into play with, and, and I'm sure, you know, the current economic situation is kind of complicated things, too. So some people that are supposed to be living there, they'll invite additional people to live with them. They have enough parking, according to code, but they have this influx, especially in the summertime and on the weekends, that people are coming that are not registered there, or they don't even register to as visitors there.
What do they do to the cars that are parked in violation? Let's say I live there, and my spot is taken by somebody. What do they do?
So for the longest time, they weren't doing anything. It created some problems there. Our police activity increased there. I was working with them, and one of the things that we came up with, which complicated things for the Carrollwood neighborhood, is that really, if they don't belong there, they should be towed out of there. So they had that policy for a while. They, they used it, but in the last six to eight months, they've increased it tremendously, to the point where there has been days where they've towed five cars out of there. And when they tow a car out, it's $235. They've towed out one car three times in one week, out of the, the parking lot, which amazed me that somebody did that. So, so as they increase their efforts to try to control things that are going on there, people obviously try to avoid getting their cars towed, and they're parking on the street. Either they'll pay the $30 fine that we have, or in some cases, obviously, some people just ignore it.
How successful are we, you know, like the, the individual that has 10 parking tickets? How successful are we in getting the fees?
Right. So the, the one we had, the one, the one that's kind of outrageous is 18 tickets, actually, with none paid, four in collections right now. For the, that time period from January 1st of 2019, we're at 62% as far as collecting fines, which is very, very high. Usually, we're around 30 to 35. But obviously, we still have a lot of money out there, and as people neglect the payment, it increases, and it goes to collections.
Well, you know, 18 tickets, it would seem to me, if you had two parking tickets, your car should be towed. I mean, I, you know, I think 10 is too many. I think five is too many. We, I think, you have to get their attention. And I don't know. I mean, I feel badly for the people that, that live there, and I understand all their concerns. And I know it's a time issue for our officers, but it's taking more time for, for maybe the stepped-up patrol and writing all the parking tickets.
Yeah.
Rather than just towing them.
I agree with you, trustee Blair, especially that one in particular. I know the car, I know the plate. Sorry about that. I know the car, I know the plate. We've had special enforcement efforts directed towards that person, and no matter what we try to do, we cannot deter it. So it's frustrating on our level from police department. And that's one of the things I think if we consider anything tonight, maybe that chronic violator, you know, ordinance would be something that would help that situation. The one thing to think about it, if this, if this person was parking there, he's gotten 18 tickets. Well, I guarantee there's plenty of nights where we, and this is another problem, there's, we can't get there every night, right? Because we get busy. But there's plenty other nights that that person has been parking there. But if we just eliminated that one person, would probably help that situation a lot.
Okay. I think I'll let you know if I have more questions right now.
Thank you.
You have a, you know, just a moment, trustee Martinez. I'm going to ask the general question. So does High Crest have extra parking available, and do they issue overnight parking coupons or vouchers or whatever for people? I'm just curious, because I don't know if they do even have extra parking.
They do, mayor. They have extra parking. They, they issue the, at least five guest passes a month. You have to get them daily. So you have to call the, the management office and say, I'm going to have a guest over. And actually, they could stay there up to five days. They'll let people know for extended period of time, if somebody visitor. I think, I think High Crest, in my opinion, has done what they need to do is, is a management. And they've tried to, you know, control the situation as far as the parking goes, and to the point where they're towing cars out of there. So obviously, they're working on that problem. Unfortunately, it causes this, this problem for the Carrollwood neighborhood. So.
So just as a follow-up, quick question. If someone is pulling on, you know, either Carrollwood or, you know, Deerwood, are they trying to avoid paying High Crest?
Yes.
Or there just is no additional parking? Okay, so. Or there just is no additional parking? Okay, so.
Yeah, they're both actually. That's why sometimes you'll have a resident that's actually, you know, is qualified to park in High Crest, but there's no parking spots, especially on a weekend. So they loop around, loop around, can't find a spot, they go into the neighborhood. But then there's other times where they're just trying to avoid that, that toll.
You know, and, and just as trustee Blair was saying, you know, it is just, and we understand the safety concerns and all of the other. It does not sound like a good situation overall if people are, you know, throwing garbage and all of the other things, you know, that we've heard about. But I just wanted to clarify those because I, I wasn't sure exactly what was causing them to park there. And it seems to be like it has increased.
Yeah. It's definitely increased and I think possibly especially over the summer. And, and you got to think that, you know, people have lost their jobs. Maybe there's multiple people, more people living in there. We've had, we've had inspections there and, and everything is in order that way. But there's no doubt there's, there's extra tenants living there based on what's going on, so.
Okay, thank you, chief. Trustee Martinez?
Yes, I have a quick question for the chief. Though that individual with eighteen tickets or the other individual would generate, had any of those cars been towed at all?
No, we can't tow. We don't, we don't have that ordinance. That's why we talk about that chronic violator ordinance. That might be something that can helpful, be helpful that way. It used to be that if you had that many tickets, you can get your license suspended. But that program from the state has been disbanded at this point.
So basically, if we want to take some precautions or minimize the, the concerns that the neighbors have, we're going to have to pass an ordinance that would require towing or some other action above and beyond just picking the car.
Some of the residents feel that way. There's other residents that feel like what we're doing is, is, is working. So either way, somebody's going to be upset, actually, so.
Okay, thank you.
Chief? Go ahead.
I have a question regarding towing and this might be a question for Eric. If we tow a car and it becomes damaged because of the tow, are we in any way, shape or form liable?
Technical answer to that question would be yes, the village would be liable if you do that. I would presume if we enter into such a program, we would negotiate a contract with a third-party towing company where they would have to indemnify us and hold us harmless. But of course, then that requires them to indemnify us and hold us harmless. So, you know, there's so the technical answer to your question is yes. However, I would believe that we would try to pass that off, that responsibility off to whoever we'd hire as a third-party towing contract.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question in terms of switching options, the boot. You put up the chart that had the two hundred and fifty dollars, then the daily fees, and there was a third charge. I don't remember. Do all of those fees exist with the boot or is it like a flat fee, pay a hundred bucks and the boot's removed?
We don't have a boot program at all. I'm sorry if you thought we did. I, I, we have a fake boot program as a deterrent. So what I was doing was I was putting our own car out there and booting it and it actually worked. The neighbor said that was amazing. And every now and then I would put our own car, put a boot on it, just so people think we have a boot program, but we don't have one. Other, other, I'm sorry, other municipalities have them. Addison has one, Skokie has one. A lot of the bigger cities have it. And what they do is usually that five ticket kind of mark, they'll boot it and then you have to pay for, you know, the release of the boot and everything like that.
If we had a boot program, would that be village administered or would that be something we'd partner with a tow company to do?
The problem is if it's on a village street, the police would have to be involved.
I can, I'm sorry, Mayor, can I go?
Yes, please, trustee Chris.
Okay. Oh, this is, the first question is for attorney Pat. The people that are at ten and eighteen tickets, if we did put in a program of towing or even booting, although I'm not in favor of booting as much as towing, would they count already?
So you're, you're saying, would you be able to apply the ordinance retroactively as opposed to prospectively?
Correct.
You try it, my recommendation would be strongly against it. I believe that that would be a due process violation.
Okay. And I kind of thought that would be the case, but it doesn't sound like this one guy would be a problem in getting up to whatever number we say anyway.
Yeah.
The next question then is, chief, how many, okay, so we do this for Carrollwood and I would assume Deerwood because those are the, seem like the two problems right now. How much further out does that then push the problem?
Yeah, that's, that's one of the things I'm concerned about. I, I would think Shelley Court too would be part of this. And then my concern is, does it go farther down, you know, Carrollwood all the way to Shelley Court, including Shelley Court? And does this push the problem further that way or even further east? That's kind of a long walk. I would hope not. And, and actually the pathway seems best for Carrollwood and, and Deerwood, so. It's a possibility.
And when we talk about a trial program, I assume, because I think we were thinking about like a year-long type of a program, is that something that we would have to determine right now, the exact area, or would we be able to come back if we find out that it is pushing it out and say, hey, we got to expand it a little bit now before this year is up?
Yeah, I think that would be one of the benefits of doing a trial program because that could be a potential problem for us. And we may, may have to, after the trial program, figure out, okay, we got to expand this, so.
Okay. Administratively, how hard or easy would it be to keep track of this with the number of tickets? Is that something that can almost be done with frontline? Because I, I noticed that you want to have frontline not be available to someone who is, who has unpaid tickets. So is that something that can be incorporated in that or is that a separate area that you're going to have to spend time with?
I'm going to have to spend time with it. I'm hoping that there's a way to get our frontline system talking to our parking system, our MSI system. But right now it isn't. It's just tallying, kind of pulling all the information and kind of comparing it. If we're talking just that neighborhood, it's not that bad. I mean, it, it took quite a few hours. But if we expand it, then it's going to be problematic.
Okay. Can I follow up on that last point you just made, chief? And this might be another question for you, attorney Pat. Can we pass an ordinance for two streets? If we pass an ordinance that says you have more than five tickets, you will be towed, can I, can we do it for two streets or does it have to be village-wide?
That, that type of ordinance would have to be village-wide about the five tickets. I believe, and I don't want to speak for Chief Cunningham, but I believe his reference was to the, you know, no parking signage or permit program or some kind of special localized program. But yes, if you're going to do X number of tickets equals towing or booting, that would be a village-wide program.
Right.
Chief, I have another question. Isn't my understanding that some of the cars that are parked there are calling in and using the addresses of the people that live on Carrollwood?
Yeah, that does happen. And it's kind of hard for us to, to, to kind of rectify that because when you use that frontline program, you call in the, your car and where it's at, right? And the whole premise of that program is possibly you have guests over, so they don't live in the neighborhood. They don't register to that address. You know, they're staying overnight or maybe they were drinking, so that, we don't capture that. So that program doesn't specifically say that you can park in front of your address if you live at that, that house, you know. But that is, that has caused problems. I looked at some of the, the more chronic violators and compared their registration plates to our frontline program and, and many of them are not even using that frontline program. I think initially they were. But at this point, they're at the point where they're just going to, they'll take the ticket and not pay it.
So, I mean, to stop that from happening, we would have to have some sort of permit parking. And if you didn't have a permit, if you were a guest and, you know, you didn't have the permit in the window, then you would get a ticket and/or be towed.
Right.
I mean, I don't know how else you can stop them from just calling in because I don't remember, I'm usually not the one that calls in, but you have to give your name. But that's not hard to find out either.
Right.
Whoever lives there. How cumbersome would a permit parking be for our officers?
I think on the front end, it would be administratively, something we'd have to work on. On the, we'll try to make it as easy for the officers as possible. So they would just be looking for a sticker. And a lot of agencies use their vehicle, village vehicle sticker, right, to solve that. And that's a whole nother study session that maybe we shouldn't even talk about. But, uh, yeah, so we would make sure that they have the stickers or they have a pass, so the officers would see that and they wouldn't write the ticket. So on the front end, we'd have to make sure that people are following that program. The hard part is, there's no doubt that at some point we're going to tow somebody's car that, you know, forgot to put their pass in there or something like that.
I bet they only do it once.
Right, exactly.
Chief? Chief?
Yes, trustee Abbott?
Yeah, have, have we ever thought about just putting up signs that say tow zone without changing the ordinance and see if that deters people?
Yeah, I'm, I'm up for that too. I'll, I'll try anything. Like I said, we've been putting our own cars out there and booting it. And that might be helpful. But we'll still have people that'll, will chance that, I'm sure, so.
Well, but I'm, I mean, you're always going to have, I guess it sounds like you're always going to have people that might park there and leave it overnight, but it seems, I, I'd be curious to see to what degree the problem could be minimized through those signs. I mean, if we can cut, you know, if we could cut the problem down in half from those without doing anything with the ordinance.
Right.
And that way we're not burdening your staff time. You know, we may get some, we may get enough of a benefit just from dummy signs, basically, to make the problem be, you know, minimized to the point where we don't really have to get into one of these other issues that, you know, there's no, doesn't sound like there's any easy, any easy solution. I mean, every, every, everything you've proposed has a downside, either on manpower or some other reason. So I, I'd be in favor of starting off to see if, if dummy signs would work or at least, you know, make the situation palatable to residents. If, if I can weigh in on that, trustee Abbott, from a legal standpoint, I'd recommend against dummy signs. Village should not be putting up signage in the village that implies there is a law in place when there isn't one. Putting aside the sign pollution aspect of it, I also think that it, it's a slippery slope as far as precedent. And you'll have people in all sorts of neighborhoods wanting all sorts of different signs. And I just think from a, from a legal standpoint, it's a, it's a difficult precedent to set with respect to misleading the public. It's one thing for the chief to put a car out there that's temporary with a boot. I think putting up formal signage is, is a different alternative. Obviously, it's the board's prerogative. It's not against the law. It's not violating anyone's civil rights, but I do think it establishes a, a difficult precedent for the village. I would recommend against it.
Thank you, attorney Pat. Anyone else?
I have a question. I think it's for Director Bethel. Knowing that area, knowing that neighborhood, are there any parking options that are not residential? I think I spoke to Minister Stonage about this earlier. I can't see it being possible, but is it possible to park on eighty-third street? Those cars have to go somewhere. They're clearly there. What other options are there?
Hi, trustee Page. I can go ahead and let me just kind of overview and provide some, some background and we can certainly evaluate it further. So just for context, eighty-third is an FAU route, a federal aid urban route classified underneath the federal highway administration system. So it's underneath Woodridge jurisdiction, but is a connected route that has a larger volume of traffic. And again, is essentially three lanes, one east, one west, and then a shared center turn lane. Because it's an FAU route, last year we had implemented and finished a resurfacing of that road using federal grant funds. And those funds come through IDOT. So if we're going to make changes to that roadway, which changes the flow or use, we would need to, to review that with, with IDOT. Putting parking on there that eliminates some of the through lanes or turn lane capacity could potentially be, be an issue. Just kind of looking at that general area of Carrollwood and Deerwood, there are some resident driveways that actually exit on to eighty-third on either side of Carrollwood. And, and so I, I put that out there, only in that putting parking in may restrict line of sight for both people pulling off of Carrollwood or Deerwood, as well as those that want to come out of their, their private, private driveways. The other issue is on the north side of the road, there is a bike path and then on the south side of the road, there is a sidewalk. So trying to use, it is a wider right-of-way that, that could potentially accommodate parking. But last item, again, just operationally that would need to be considered as we enter the winter season is putting parking stalls there as far as plowing and snow removal, as far as kind of the, the time to do that or whether or not they're fully functional at all times of the, of the year. So those are just kind of some of the issues for consideration, but can kind of put more of an engineering detail to it if the board wanted to explore it further.
Thank you.
And chief? Question on the chronic violators. The ones that are like over five and all the way up to the eighteen, are most of them people that don't pay?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief, I'd like to ask a follow-up question. The person that has eighteen tickets currently, what is the next step? Exactly what will we as a village do in a police department?
Right. So that person has received notice from us, right? Hey, you're violating multiple times. Has been arrested for other things like traffic issues. Person has a suspended license at one point, had a warrant at one point. So there's been a lot of contact that way. So there's not really any solution to, is a lack of regard for the parking issues, so it's a difficult situation.
Without giving any information that we shouldn't have, where does this person reside? They don't live in Woodridge, then I'm going to take it?
No, no, yeah. Well, this person visits somebody in, in the High Crest neighborhood.
So I, the way I'm looking at it, and I, and I agree with, with trustee Page, cars have to go somewhere. But to me, the top priority, the cars of the people that reside there have to go somewhere. If you're not authorized to live there, I have no problem towing your car. I just don't. I mean, so to me, part of the problem, a big piece of the problem is all the people that are residing there that shouldn't be. And how do you fix that?
Right. The stance that High Crest has taken to, up to this point is very aggressive tow policy to tow cars out of there that shouldn't be there. It hasn't worked, obviously, because people will park further down and walk over. So it's, it's a difficult situation.
If I could, I'm going to ask administrator Stonage if he would read a public comment that we just received as a follow-up.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Cunningham. One moment. We received a follow-up comment from Donna Zankis at eight two one two Deerwood Court. Just a suggestion, instead of towing violators, maybe a more aggressive parking ticket. If they have more than four, maybe the price should jump up significantly. Thanks again, Jim and Donna.
Thank you for reading that record and so that everyone has the information. You know, I'm not sure. Are there any other comments? Because I know we're kind of coming up close to the time for our regular board meeting to start.
Mayor?
Yes, please, trustee Martinez.
My concern with the recommendation from the resident is that we're dealing here with individuals that regardless of the, the number of tickets or how much are the tickets, they're not paying the tickets. So we can go from thirty-five dollars to fifty to a hundred, two hundred. If they're not paying, what solution do we have? I mean, it, it seems like it could be an ever-ending solution or problem. I, I don't disagree with making it more expensive, but as the chief has indicated, a lot of these people are not paying the tickets. So I don't know. I think towing, as much as I don't like the whole concept. I think towing, as much as I don't like the whole concept, may be a solution to consider.
Thank you very much, Trustee Martinez. Going to ask Administrator Stonage, um, do you need further information from us or?
Sure, for, for purposes of this evening, if there is a couple of things we can do. One is, we can come back to the board with additional information and another study session. But what the direction we would like to see tonight, if we can, is, is there something where the board has consensus on a particular ordinance that you'd like us to bring forward? And so you, Chief Cunningham laid out a couple of the options of the permit parking or just the tow zone or the habitual offender ordinance. Wondering if there's any sort of uh consensus there that we would bring something back to you in January for approval or another round of discussion? It's up to you.
Okay, so I'm going to ask the board, one, do you need more information? Would you like us to come back with either responses to uh further inquiries or what was given us, you know, this evening? Um,
Adam, Mayor, I don't necessarily need anything more or except for perhaps the area that we would want to do my preferred solution, which would be a chronic violator. Um, and I realize it would be through the whole city, we couldn't just specifically keep it there. But I think if someone has five tickets or more and they're not paying it, um, I would have no problem with their car being towed.
Thank you very much, Trustee Cruzek.
I agree with Trustee Cruzek.
Thank you, Trustee Abbott.
I agree with that too, Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Martinez.
I agree also, um, I wouldn't mind seeing the bar lowered a little bit though and um, instead of five, maybe do four, three. Um, I, I think, I think we have to get their attention. And then maybe the problem will get better.
Thank you, Trustee Blair.
I would support, this is Trustee Hendricks, I would support, um, I, I like the boot program, I think. Cause it's, can you hear me?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, it keeps, it keeps cutting off. I, I would support the uh boot program just because I think um, if there's unpaid tickets, then you just don't remove the boot. And so you're guaranteed to get the money that's needed and typically that kind of resolves the issue.
Thank you, Trustee Hendricks.
And I would say I would want more information on two things. The cost of establishing a boot program as well as that permit process. Um, what the administrative cost would be if we established a permit process? I get nervous about driving people further into poverty. And the moment you have a daily fee of $35 to get your car out of impound, what you're doing is you're creating an equity issue and you're gonna drive people further into poverty. At the same time, if you got five tickets, there's gotta be consequences because clearly just getting the ticket isn't consequence enough. And so I want to know what the boot would cost. If that was a flat fee, hey, you have to pay 150 to get the boot off. That's something I can completely support. And I would follow up with um, uh, Trustee Blair's point of, I would be fine with three. Three tickets unpaid, throw a boot on it.
Yes, and we have someone with 18 tickets. So, you know, I mean, obviously.
Trying to get to 18.
Hard to beat that one, but um, anyway, okay, thank you, Administrator Stonage. Do we have enough uh to go forward?
Yes, thank you, and I'm looking to Chief, I believe we do.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you, everyone. And we'll go ahead and uh, if there's nothing further, if I could have a motion, please, to adjourn our study session.
So move, Trustee Page.
Thank you, Trustee Page, and a second, please.
Back to Trustee Cruzek.
Thank you, Trustee Cruzek. All those in favor, please sign aye.
Aye.
The time is seven o'clock and we are adjourned. We will all meet uh in our other meeting. You should have that invitation from Mr.